Little sign, I would change. Plan down. So, I said to. There are nobody looking for. The only one. Keep going every year. Bad fixes, lots of years. I don't know, I dumped a lot of whiffle bags that year.
Did you?
But I don't think there is any time. I don't know why they have. Roger, they said Roger's in fact, this is October, yes. I told me. I don't go there. We got a lot of dealers. Yeah, good. Yeah, but it can be turned on by the direction of your. Major. Who we're looking at, whatever we. I asked them if they enjoyed it or not. You look like me. I see stuff. No. I thought. And three times he was inspired. That's just well, those are messages. And then lived in. As far as the. Aaron wants. Do you impress that? I could not see my. Shouldn't be scared of you, but it's like. It's. Sure. So. Can't. Excellent. There is. It gets a lot of open. I made it so there's an actual. It was called. No. Sorry, Dan. We have to hear. Oh, yeah, yeah, that's. Dodge him, I still hear. Rod just stepped in, he's went to the rescue. It all looks like crap this year. Here's my shirt, now we don't. But this is where the. Uh, there are some better insurance. If there's twenty. That is all right. Yeah, it's a little bit better than trace on there, it's right. You up into that? I haven't. I'll be sent to be. Uh, I'll be sent to get a speaker. Just like I didn't want to assist. All. Yeah. Listen, I just. It's creating a lot of difference. Yeah. Of course.
All right, everyone, M. Frav here and. We are a couple of minutes after ten, so we can start this public hearing. I would entertain a motion to open the public hearing for joint drainage. How also suit the one.
So move.
Okay, motion, do we have a second?
Second. Rod, second.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carry unanimous. Um, I will turn it over to Colin to present.
Well, yeah, morning, everybody. Um, my name is Colin Klingbile with Apes and Westergaard out of Esterville. And I brought Max Bonamy with me. He's a, he's kind of here as an observer, but he's a new hire that we have. Uh, like engineer, recent graduate, so.
Nice to meet everyone.
Thanks, thanks, everybody for coming this morning. Um, yeah, so this, we're talking about joint drainage district number one, main open ditch. And just to kind of get some housekeeping stuff out of the way, there is some handouts that it was, it's kind of like a boiled down version of what we're going to be talking about. Did everybody get, hit a hand? You did not? Okay. Thanks, Max. And then. So that's kind of a boiled down version of it. We do have a few copies of the more detailed, uh, like the engineer's full report and an amendment, and then some preliminary engineering plan. If anybody's interested in those, we can, we can hand a few of those out. We got them up here. Uh, and then, you'd like to show. Uh, and then. We've got a PowerPoint there off to the side that I'll kind of be going through. I apologize if I gotta crick your neck to the side, but I'll try to make it so that you don't have to look over there anymore. Um. And so today, we're going to be talking about, um, some of the damages that have occurred to the, to the main open ditch of joint drainage district one. Um, go through kind of what we found in our investigation of that. Uh, and then, go ahead, go to the next slide. Well. Yeah, and then basically, we're also going to talk about what we've got objections and comments here that are written. Uh, we'll, we'll open it up for questions and comments from, from you all and also from the board, of course. I think. I mean, there's pretty significant damage along the ditch. It varies, it's about thirty miles in length total. Um, the, the entire ditch, not all of it is.
Injured.
Uh, some places are worse than others. And I think one of the big discussions is, okay. What kind of repairs do we make? And so we've kind of got three options, and if you've looked through, um, the report or the, the amendment, you've kind of maybe at least understand what we're talking about. We'll go through those. Um, go through the comments and objections, and then at the end of the meeting, um, basically, we may be at a point where a decision could be made. This is a formal hearing, um, so a decision could be made to proceed with something. Um, I guess the, the alternative to that is if there's a need to continue the hearing to another date, continue the discussion, or if we need to go and then look at something more, uh, to bring more information back, that's something that we could consider as well. I guess we'll just see where it, where it goes. Uh. So with that being said, kind of just some background on this ditch is, as many of you probably know, because you pay the bill, that there was a major cleanout project that was done on this, this open ditch. Uh, primarily that work we've done in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. Uh, all, when all was said and done with that project, it was a levy of about two point nine million dollars. Um, so, and that cleanout project, uh, included a lot of pipe work, uh, cleaning out the bottom of the ditch, uh, basically accumulated sediment, um, and then also tree clearing and, and things of that nature. And it also included a, a reclassification of the entire district. Uh, and then, so that happened, and part of that project was, as I understand it, the, the banks of the ditch were kind of laid bare and, and stripped of vegetation as part of that project. And that's not untypical for a, a cleanout project. Uh, but then that got reseeded and. And then there was a. A lot of sandy areas, and that didn't take very well, it had a drought, what have you. Um, then it last, last spring, again, as many of you all well know, there was a localized large flood event where there was, um, kind of reports that I heard of like about five inches of rain in just a couple hours. And when I look at. Uh, when I look at. You know, the, the statistical frequency of that, that's, that's supposed to happen once every about between hundred and two hundred years. Uh, just to, just kind of for, for background sake. Uh, so that happened, and then, uh, basically, there was a big flushing out of the ditch, and a lot of damage was caused as part of that. When we went out and looked at it, we also found a lot of pipes that were spent, and really, there is evidence in, in our minds that the previous, but not last winter, but the winter before, there was a lot of snow, a lot of snow and ice. And when that melted, that's what it looked like to us, is that. Ice flow and things like that, huffed up the banks and smashed the pipes. And that's, in, in my mind, also contributed to the damage that we saw when we went out there late last year. Um, so then several repair requests were made, so the different landowners saw that there was some pretty major damages along the ditch and made requests to the, to the board to make repairs. And kind of my understanding at that point is there was an understanding that there was enough damages that were widespread along the ditch that it wasn't going to make sense to handle it, you know, one location at a time. Uh, but so that's, that's when we got involved as an engineer to go investigate and survey the damages, uh, go through all the process of figuring out what, what we should do about it, and then come and have a meeting like this. Uh, so. And I kind of already went through this, but this is just kind of some different things we were going to talk about today. The reports, uh, different repair options, talk about comments and objections, and then also. You know, it's interesting, twenty twenty-three was a year that everybody thinks of it being really dry, but. That flood happened, and that's when, that's, that's what brought this project about. Uh, but this spring, it has been a lot more flooding and a lot more potentially damages, but we, we have not been out there to resurvey the ditch and, and determine, you know, what the extent of any additional damages are. Uh, one thing we're going to talk about is, is funding. And I was just, just kind of a preview for that. There's, there's a potential that, that if there's additional damages from twenty twenty-four, uh, that those would be eligible for like FEMA funding. And so typically, that would cover eighty-five percent of the cost of the additional damages. But just. For what we're talking about today, the cost estimates and everything is all based on the survey, uh, that we did of the ditch in November and December of twenty twenty-three. So it was before any of the, any of the stuff from this year. Uh, so we kind of have a discussion on that, on how to, how to handle any additional damages from twenty twenty-four. Uh, and then potentially decide on whether, what to move forward with or if we need to continue here. So that's, just real quickly, and you. Think? No, I don't know, that's it, that's not a, you know. So this is just a, a map to get your bearings, great, of what we're talking about the area. But that's, that's joint drains district number one, and the blue line is the main open ditch. And so you can, you can kind of see, I, I pointed out some different towns, you can get your bearings a little bit, the, the thick black lines of the county, on the county lines. So it goes into Palo Alto County, and it's a good chunk, you know, of the, of the western part of Seward County, at least south of the, and the Palo Alto County line. So there's over, there's over forty thousand acres involved in this drainage district. Okay. And I kind of touched on this, on what happened. We talked about the ice and the snowmelt and the, the rain event. And then. I will just kind of point out that we noticed that the lower end of the ditch, further to the south, typically was worse than the very upper end. Up by Fenton in that area, it wasn't nearly, nearly as bad. Uh, not saying there's no damages up there, but it just wasn't as bad as it was further to the south. And, and some of that is from the composition of the banks. Maybe you can see further to the south, there's a lot of sand and gravel and rocks that are in some of these areas that the banks, the banks didn't hold up to the high, to the high waters. I just, I did want to, since we went through this whole ditch and drove it, wanted to at least go through, and Max is kind of flipping through a few photos here of some of the, some of the damages that we saw. Um, like there, you can see the. And not all of these, you have a perfect picture, but you can see the rock, and you can see the gravelly, uh, material in the bank. Um, there you can see, well, it looks like the bank actually, there's, there's darker, um, soil in that, but the bank just didn't hold up. They all sloughed in. There, that might be one of the worst stretches, uh, along the entire ditch. Um. That's. That's really bad, that spot. And you can, it's interesting, you can see kind of the soil horizons. Um. From when maybe a previous cleanout, when the original digging was done. There, there's black dirt, and then there's gravel on top of it, then at the very top, there's, there's grass and a little bit of, of black dirt again. Uh. I just go ahead and kind of keep slowly flipping through this. And kind of the places, again, that we saw the worst damages typically were areas where there was gravel and sand in the banks, uh, around some of the bends, and some of those had previously had riprap put on them. Uh, and those typically held up pretty good. Um. But there were cases where there was riprap. Hold up, Max, if you want to back up a little bit. Um. There was riprap that was put down, and then where the riprap stopped and it went back to just dirt banks, then there was a hole right there. So maybe, you know, a little more riprap needed to be added. It didn't go as far around the curve as it needed to, perhaps. Uh, those are kind of the main areas that we saw the worst damages. Now, the pipes, these, this is just kind of a, a sampling of the things that we commonly saw. And I think, I think the good news here is really, really, in my opinion, when we, when we went out and looked at these pipes, there's, there's actually quite a few of them that I think, I think we can just cut off the ends. You can see so, some of those, I mean. You got to do something. I mean, eighty percent of the, the pipe area is, is blocked off, or it gets bent. Some of, there's some that are actually broke off, and you have to, we have to probably replace some pipes. But some of these, I think we could actually either torch, maybe torch off the ends or something, and it'd be okay. And that, that would be a lower cost option to try to, to try to fix this. And these, these, I think, all happened from ice, from the, from snowmelt from the winter before. These, there's not increasing areas where this was worse, too. So there are some places where it wasn't bad at all, and then there was places where every pipe was inked in, like they got bashed. Uh. But we believe that was from ice. And then, uh, we did find a couple of spots from the last project where there was a failure kind of of the riprap, where it had, had sloughed down the bank. And it looked like, and this is by no means along the entire ditch, there was really only two spots, they were both in the same area, that the ripraps slipped down the, down the ditch bank. And. In our opinion, it was because the rock that was put there was, was small. So riprap is supposed to have a certain gradation, and these, you know, it was maybe a little bit bigger than softball, volleyball size, though it's smaller in these two areas. And when the swift current came in, it just, it just didn't hold up. Uh, but just slid down the bank a little bit. This is something that, this wasn't involved in the last project. Um. But it's, it's in a pasture, and there's, there's a large, I'm trying to even remember how many, I think it was thousands of acres that surface drained to this spot in, in a pasture, and then entered the ditch. And. Pre, prior to the last repair project, this rock, rock chute plume was put in. Um, and again, this is something that I wouldn't be surprised if this was in a lot worse shape today than it was last fall, but. It was starting to get undermined, and basically the water would, would dive down and have all this turbulence, and basically, something, something probably needs to be done there, otherwise that, that whole thing's going to get blown out. Um. We kind of talked through this, why was the, why was the ditch damaged so badly? Um, it really was a lot of things that came together at once that were unfortunate, that, that didn't do the ditch any favors. Got the poor material in the banks, the big, the big flash flood event. Um. The historic, um, winter, we had the melting of snow and ice. Uh, all those things kind of came together, and, and the banks were bare still, you know, the, the grass really hadn't established well after that last repair project. So it was kind of vulnerable to, to the flooding that occurred. Okay. Uh, I do want to talk about, a little bit about bank slopes. So I know I've had discussions, kind of like different landowners about, you know, should they be flatter, or it, was, was the last project, was that done right? And I went back and looked in the original, and this is, this is common for a lot of these drainage districts in, in northern Iowa. The original design, which was from nineteen sixteen, they had one-to-one slopes. So for every one foot horizontal, they went one foot vertical, that's, so forty-five degree angle, basically, thrown horizontal. That's what those banks were dug at originally. Um, in the last repair project. It was a whole ser, Bolton Lake did this complete survey of the open ditch, and kind of what they found is that, for the most part, on the average, the ditch has, uh, now about one and a half to one side slope. So it's already, those one-to-one slopes didn't hold, and it kind of slowly, over time, corroded a little bit flat. Um. And my understanding in, in talking with Bolton Lake is that what they, in setting those slopes for the last repair project, which most of it, they did it one and a half to one, one reach at two to one. Uh, they were just basically trying to match the existing side slopes of the ditch from before the repair. Uh, and then, the reason why I kind of want to talk about the bank slopes is there is one option that we've evaluated of flattening those slopes out. Uh, and just the, there's an Iowa Drainage Guide, if any of you are familiar with it, it's a publication from Iowa State University Extension. Um, in that, they talk about if you're going to just make a ditch, um, kind of depending on what material you have to, to make the banks, kind of going to depend on what, what slopes you could, you could get away with that would be stable. And it, it all kind of makes sense. If you have, if you have hard blue clay, you definitely could have steeper slopes than if you've got gravel or, you know, sandy material that, that can't hold up as well. Uh, and so what that guide says is that for clay and other, other heavy soils, about one and a half to one, um, two to one for silt, three to one for sand. Um, so that just kind of gives you a perspective of, of that, but we'll get more into that discussion later, but obviously, the flatter, the flatter you can get those slopes, the better as far as, you know, the bank's holding up well. But if they're one and a half to one now, and we're going to flatten them out, I mean, there's going to be land lost to the channel. So that's something that has to be considered, um, as, as part of the decision-making process. But. Uh, just kind of a, an overview on drainage district repairs. So I just kind of put a little bit of, a, a few snippets from the Iowa code, uh, on repairs. So the, the Board of Trustees or the district does have a, a responsibility to keep the, the improvement, and by the improvement, it means the open ditch. Um, in this case, in, in repair. So basically, you can't just let it, let it go. Uh, and then at a hearing like this, the board shall hear objections to the feasibility of making the proposed repair. So that's, and, and then kind of connected with that, or to determine whether the repair is necessary or desirable and feasible. So there is a, there is an element there of what's, what's feasible. Um. But, and that's kind of, but we'll get more into that, too. But I guess my philosophy in this is, okay, we have this ditch that's damaged, and I believe that open ditches do have the ability to kind of heal themselves. There's some minor little damages, um, if you give it time and it, if you don't have, you don't keep getting flood of it, like we've gotten this year, that they can kind of heal over, and it's, it's, they'll be fine. It's actually probably better to leave them rather than come in there with an excavator and, and, and rough them all, rough the bank up all again. Um, but if you have more severe damages, you get to a certain point, and if you leave them, it's just going to get worse and worse. You saw some of those pictures where you've got these vertical banks. Anytime the water comes up, it's just going to keep eating the bank further and further and, and exacerbate the damages. So I think we're kind of, I mean, it's, it's unfortunate, of course, with the, the major repair project that was done so recently. Uh, I think, I guess the philosophy that I have is that, okay, let's not just go hog wild on overdoing the repairs, but we got to do something for some of these spots that if you leave them, it's just going to give. Uh, so I kind of got that on that slide. Um.
A question.
Is, yeah.
You forgot to mention who is responsible, you said feasible, but who's responsible for all this damage?
Responsible for the damages?
Besides the wind ring and snow?
Um. I don't, I don't know what you mean, I guess. I, I think we'll get, we'll get back, if you, if it's okay, I'd like to just finish with, with kind of my part, and then we'll. Uh. And I talked about the pipes, so go ahead and answer. So, okay. We've got three different cost estimate. Uh, three different options, kind of that we looked at, and, and basically, you know, the pipes, that's a constant. With every option, we got to do something about those bent and busted pipes. Uh, however, there's different options we have for how do we deal with some of these banks that have sloughed, sloughed off and have failed. Uh, again, some of the minor damages, we're just, we're planning on leaving those. Uh, but then what do we do with the moderate and severe damaged banks? So this repair option one, for those, basically, we'd be looking at primarily doing riprap. So this is kind of a, a detail, a general detail of what we'd be looking at. Uh, basically, you're kind of, you shape the bank up at the bottom of the channel, and then you put about six feet vertical of, of riprap on the lower part of the bank. And a big part of that is to hold the bottom. So when these banks sloughed in, the bottom kind of fell out, and then everything on top fell down. Well, if you can get a hard bottom of the bank, you don't necessarily have to riprap all the way up to the top of the bank. So that's kind of the idea here. Now, some of the areas that are pretty badly damaged, there's still going to be a little bit of land that's lost to the channel, because you can't really take bad material. Here, we can put some underneath the riprap. Uh, but we still, above the riprap, if it's just vertical, we have to pull that back over. Um, so anyways, this, that's kind of the, the basics of what we'd be looking at for that repair option number one, where we're primarily looking at riprap repairs. Now, I will say, before we get to the other options, that in any option we're looking at, riprap is going to be a part of it. It's just a matter of. How much? So to give you, to kind of give you an idea of that, we've got three repair options, and we've got estimates of, I think, ranging from up to forty thousand feet of bank covered with, you know, with riprap protection down to about four thousand. Uh, so there's kind of a, there's a range there. Go, go ahead and go to the next one. Uh, the next, this repair option number two, we would do something a little different. So for the very worst stuff, we'd still be doing riprap, but kind of. But kind of the stuff that's more in the moderate range, we'd be just back shaping the bank. So basically, we go back to where at the bottom where there's no sloughing, no loose material, and then just pull the pull the bank back from that point up uh at the existing one and a half to one uh bank slope. And so that's just at the locations where there's damages. And so if you compare this with the rip wrap, it's less expensive. You don't have to haul in rip wrap, you don't have to buy a rip wrap uh and place it. Uh, on the other hand, it doesn't provide as good a protection. And also, you end up losing more more land to the channel with that because you have to pull back further to to slope the bank back. You can't build it underneath the rip wrap. So at the top of the bank, I would expect that more land would be lost to the channel at these locations. Then go ahead. So the third thing we looked at was, okay, you know, in especially in some of these areas, really, the the bank slopes are steeper than what would be ideal. Um, so we looked at the lower twenty miles of the main open ditch. So it's, it would be a little bit north of Highway eighteen from that point south. Uh, we would be looking at flattening the the bank slopes to a two to one. So two feet horizontal for every one foot vertical, pulling the banks back, and that would make them more more stable. That would be a lot of excavation, and that would, we talk about land loss to the channel, that would be even more. Uh, we're kind of estimating about thirty acres total that would be lost to the channel um if we slope the banks back uh in the lower twenty miles of the dish. Now, obviously, along roads and things, we wouldn't be sloping it back because we're not moving the road. I mean, that that's just got to stay as it is. But uh, that's kind of the third option that we looked, that we looked at. And that that shows a map. So the red, the red line on there is the main open ditch that we would be looking at for flattening the banks out. So the blue, the blue part to the north, we wouldn't be. Yep. So then, cost, right? And this is understandably pretty alarming. Uh, that first option, that's where we're talking forty thousand feet of rip wrap, uh estimating a a total project cost of a little over three million dollars, which would be seventy, on average, um, across the district, seventy dollars in acre. And then the option two, with the, kind of switching to primarily looking at bank shaving, except for the worst of the worst, um, significantly less expensive.
Excuse me, you guys think this is funny up there as board of directors?
No, I'm just asking.
About this, we're going to spend a lot of money, and you're laughing about it. You guys think it's funny? Grow up.
This word.
Let's let Colin.
All resign.
But let's let Colin finish his presentation here. We'll have a long discussion. So and then for the the third option, uh for flattening the bank slopes out, kind of somewhere in between at about two point five. Oh, so go ahead. And I kind of touched on most of these, and this is in the handout. But just kind of talking about the pros and cons of looking at each one of those options. The rip wrap is a better repair than the slope in the bank back. It's it's, it's going to hold the banks better. And basically, the bank shaving thing is kind of just fixing, putting it back the way it was sort of before, before it flooded. And that really doesn't provide any additional protection moving forward. Uh, where, like option three, if we slope the banks back, that that would, because you're, you got a, you got less slope on that bank, so it's going to hold up better like the future. Um, I guess one of the side benefits I'll mention, if we if we're looking at flattening the banks out, is that you you would end up with a larger channel. Now, we're not looking at this as, okay, we need to make the channel bigger to do an improvement to from that side of things. We're looking at this as what's the the best, most economical, feasible way of doing repairs? And not just, not just throwing money away at a repair that isn't going to provide some protection in the future. Um, but with that being said, if we did it on the lower twenty miles of the ditch, if you flatten the banks out, that does end up, you have a larger channel. Uh, that could have more capacity. Uh, the rip wrap, yeah, the, the worst thing about that is the cost.
Um, it's not the worst thing about it. The worst thing about it is it's there forever. And then whenever there's repair done in the ditch, guess where it ends up? At our field. So the rip wrap option isn't an option. Hey, it is heated on curves and things, but the whole creek, it is not an option. It's it's a mess. You deal with it forever.
Bye.
What what was the rip, we know when a risen limb was dug hundred some years ago?
Yeah.
What was rip wrap used?
I don't believe so.
Yeah, so I mean.
Farmers put around her.
So I think that's, that got it to a hundred years, more than a hundred years, but no rip wrap. So.
That's right, and grading it back. I mean, it's made it a hundred years at the same one point one grade. Why now all of a sudden, grading it back is it going to change it?
Yeah, I think, I, we'll get more into that, but I I think there's been a history of issues with this. It's not like it's just been perfect all along. If you go through the history and look at the history of repairs along the ditch, it's re- really, in in my experience with a lot of different drainage ditches, this one has significant, a history of more frequent repair needs and maintenance needs than other ditches around.
And the last supervisor that took it serious was Don Bash from the South Hattler District. If we had an issue, he was there, he got a contractor to typically fix it. Now, unless it was a huge issue, but that's exactly it here. We cleaned the creek out a year and a half ago, spent one point five billion, and there's maintenance to be done. We do not have to spend three million on one crack, well, one point five billion at one crack to fix it. We need to get a contractor, go find the worst areas, whether the engineer takes care of it or the supervisors. And in all honesty, depending on the amount of money being spent, supervisors can take care of it. I have no problem with hiring an engineer to do it. But I think it wouldn't hurt, but look at the budget, that we spend so much money every year or whatever it takes every year, but we do not have to land blast this thing with a million and a half or three million dollars. It's going to continue to happen. Last, that Friday night a month ago, at a hundred twentieth street about Polizzi, overnight, overnight, the creek came up from level to bank full. And if you want to see a creek at a hundred twentieth street, go look at it, it's a river. It's a river, and that was overnight. This isn't going to stop happening. It's going to continue to happen. We're going to have repairs on this creek. We need somebody to look at these things. We got a catch-up period right now. There's areas that need to be addressed and taken care of. But the whole trick, or one thing does not need rip wrap. There's three, there there's a multiple things that have to be done, and it needs to be addressed on a point-by-point basis.
Uh, I I I completely get where you're coming from. I think in in driving along this whole, the entirety of thirty miles of the ditch, it's, in in my opinion, the spots that need immediate attention, there's, there's too many of them to just say, let's handle it on a, on a piecemeal basis.
Well, I I can think of several, have been laying there for two years, it's only got this year. They got worse, but not as bad. I think you need to look at the taxpayers and actually get a consensus on how much money people want to stick into this thing on a per-year basis and continually maintain this creek. We can't spend three million dollars every four years or a million or half every four years.
What was some of the problems with the first one? I mean, did they use a rap? One, they just did three or four years.
Yeah.
Uh. Race places, yeah.
I don't recall the beginning of the model or stuff.
Big thing, yeah, that means that one of my property rights. So that affected the, so, who is, they didn't want to buy any property right. So that really limited what you could do with size of the thing.
Well, what what was going to change? I mean, you do, going to have three million again, and you get no private training already for your business.
I think that's the, that's my concern with the million and a half dollar option is that yet we'd still be putting rip wrap on the worst of the worst spots. But the other spots, we'd just basically be trying to, trying to slope it back and not put any additional protection. Uh, it's basically just fixing them so that they don't get any worse than they are now. But that doesn't prevent, especially, there's, there's still going to be a time if you, if you slope them back, that it's raw. Again, it's raw now, but they'll still be susceptible until vegetation isn't established well to being damaged again.
But you also said something about, you know, what damage to make a force, and it's sometimes the best option.
Oh, you mean on, yeah, on some of the minor, on some of the minor ones, just just giving it time to to heal itself?
Yeah.
Yeah, I I agree with that. I think that's, and we did that. I mean, as as high as these cost estimates are, um, there was a lot of damages out there that we just said, I think we should give, the best thing to do here is to give the ditch a chance to heal itself here. If we come in here and do something, it's going to cost money, and it's going to rough, re-rough up the bank again. We're probably just as well off to let the ditch have a chance to to heal itself over there and and just kind of wait and see. Uh, but if it got to the point where you get to a certain level of damage and the ditch really isn't going to be able to to heal itself. And that's hard to say with absolute certainty when you're out there looking at each one of these sites on an individual basis. So you kind of, I mean, you have to use professional judgment in that.
So the ditch in better shape now or worse shape now, uh, five years ago? After doing that one point five?
I don't, I don't know that I can answer that. I'm not, I'm not familiar enough with what the ditch looked like prior to, prior to that last repair project.
It was fine. Who was trying to fix it?
Well, there is an area you can come two tenth to a hundred and fortyth. It's by far the worst. I mean, you take from, it's the sand zone, right around. Take from two hundred tenth street down to Rodney Shapford, one fortieth or whatever. You get down to one twentieth, one thirtieth, as steep as those banks are, that would be like Walzer in that area down by apples. It held up terrific. It was bank full of water that Friday night a month ago, and you go through there and look, and it held up very well. It's the slightest, and there's no doubt about it. And that area from two tenth to one fortieth or whatever, it's going to take, it it needs maintenance all the time. It it really needs to be watched. Well, it's, if you're going to have to pull the banks back and slope them, there's no way around that. You're going to have to hold the banks back and slope them, and and I don't know how much. I can tell you this much, in any property I own, I don't want a rip wrap for a mile. And then in twenty years, they come through, unless you can get a contractor, whether they're pulling the silt out, that they have a long reach and can leave the slopes alone, pull the metal out, and you're still going to have.
I don't think that's.
Do you have to have a pamphlet or a piece of paper with that? Markings where the main, how the main lines at? You should start.
Um, yeah, we've got different thought that should have that. I don't think probably, yeah.
Can you tell me, I'm not sure, where the ditch was on that patch here?
The ditch was on the patch.
That rock, rock chute.
Uh, I talked.
Yeah. Uh, ditch, they put in, just ruined everything. I had access to the water, because I keep animals in the pasture every summer. They've always had that. Now I have to use my well, and I'm not real, real fox. That well cost me a small fortune, and I really don't want to feed animals. But this time, with that gets there, I mean, like, I'll get out. I had a lake down there, so that ditch was being pushed for water on the outside and water in the inside, and it didn't find it. Now, I mean, it's, it's, there's no way it would, you could avoid it. But when I had that access, it wasn't a great big access. When the water came down, it just went right back from the ditch. I never had to water it, it stands for, I don't know how many days it was out there. It's too big, or too big.
Because that access can let water back into the ditch. Need some way to let water back in the ditch there.
Well, that would let water back in.
Yeah, I I think we can maybe talk about that after some more specific. Uh, I, we'll, we'll circle back to some of this conversation. There's a few other things that I wanted to go. Uh, we talked, we talked about that, and I guess I will just ask. Have, and touched on a little, but have you landowners observed in twenty twenty-four, has there been a lot more damages that you've seen as compared to what, what you saw along the ditch last year? Your observation, it seemed held up fairly good?
I think it's actually held up a lot better in most areas. This reconstruction, this is the first time that it had grown on the mile and a half. I mean, that's, this has taken that long, this is the area with large installations, so it is re-growing well.
Yeah.
So I mean, once it gets established, it will hold.
Yeah. That that'll help a lot, yeah.
I've got a big problem by Whittmore, where the railroad track comes through.
Okay, yeah.
Never dug that out. And on one side of our bridge, it's a lot deeper than the other side. On the, on the, the south side, that water just triples through. Because on the other side, because they never got the permit to dig that out. The supervisors, that was not okay before they got there. So they couldn't touch that because the railroad wouldn't let them touch it. And if you go down, you can see how much deeper the water is on the north side and on the south side. Because that was not touched by the, by the crane. Because they didn't have the permit to do that. And that's why the water on the north side is a lot deeper, and it slows down. When it gets past our bridge, it just triples through. And that's the way it's been for, since they got done. And I asked them, you got to dig that out. We don't have the permit. I said, why don't you have the permit? Because they said they didn't get it from the supervisor. That wasn't done beforehand. And so their hands are tied, that's what he told me. I said, that has to be dug out. But they reached in and just did a tiny bit, and wasn't enough. You've got all them rocks that are, that are holding that, that water from the north that goes south.
Any other damages from this year that people have? From what I've seen, the wall, it was about two years ago. I mean, there was last year, naturally, the water came through, but whatever happened the first time? Okay. Thank you. Uh, and then, you know, talking about costs, obviously, what about outside funding? Can we get funding from somewhere uh outside the district to help, help pay for these repairs? Um, I've, there are several projects that I've worked on that are like this that they ended up getting FEMA funding. Um, however, those damages were primarily done in twenty twenty three. In order to be eligible for FEMA funding, you have to have a governor, governor's disaster declaration and a presidential disaster declaration. That didn't happen. Uh, and we can only speculate as to why that is, but my, my speculation is that it was so isolated and maybe it wasn't immediately known that there was this much damage to something that that didn't end up happening. But that's, that's a huge deal because if there, if there was FEMA funding available, I mean, that's that could cover eighty-five percent of the bill.
I don't know how they couldn't know about it. The supervisor and engineer rolled that trick. In May of twenty three, they surveyed the damage. They knew then what they had.
Yeah, and at that time, we informed FEMA consultant of that too and.
Okay.
And I they did. Yeah.
Well, my question is who's benefiting from this last project? I kind of think that people have benefited. Because the people here aren't benefiting. Forgetting the results of all the water coming down. You know?
Yeah.
They're not benefiting.
See, that's, that gets into kind of a bigger discussion because when you talk about benefits, you talk about the benefits from the ditch, the ditch itself and the creation of the ditch and what that does for the lands that drain into it. And you talk about a specific repair project and what did that benefit us? I basically it gets, it gets a little bit complex to explain that because when you, when you're looking at benefits, you're typically looking at what is the benefit from this ditch? And then when you do maintenance activities, that's, that's the basis for what you do assessments.
It does a benefit, it justifies the damages that. That's, that's my. Who's, who's benefit? You know, obviously somebody in the north end of the county.
Well, the, the people whose water drained into it benefits. The people who are included in this drainage district benefit from the ditch. I know you're saying benefits from this last project. And I still would maintain that there's a benefit to, to everyone because it helped the ditch drain better. Uh,
In New York field.
Like that?
In New York field.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll, we'll get back to that. Um, so the FEMA funding, there basically for twenty twenty three damages, long story short, unfortunately, that did not. That's not a possibility for this project. Now, there, there was damages for twenty twenty four, so potentially would be eligible. Uh, and basically, if in the process of the project, there's twenty four damages, we do everything we can to try to secure that funding. But we also, we didn't stop there. Uh, we contacted several other agencies. Uh, and basically the answer unfortunately from all them is that they didn't know any funding that would be available since.
So like your picture, are they before the next years?
Yes.
So so I don't think you'd have some time to vote or probably see if they're. And fashion.
Um, so yes, and we did, when we went out there, we took pictures and we also have GPS locations of the beginning and ends of all our possible like damage sites. So if we go out there and there's more damage, um, we can pretty well say that it came from twenty twenty four and not twenty twenty three. We can differentiate with a pretty good, um, level of certainty. Uh, I'm going to try to pull this PowerPoint back.
Well, some of the mistakes that were made on this last one, you were talking. Some of the rock that we put on the riprap wasn't big enough. Uh, was there other things? I've heard they used the tooth. I heard they used the tooth, uh, thing, you know, the science, which created more erosion potential. I mean, I don't know either, so.
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you, I didn't. When I was looking at it, obviously I'm looking at damages that are there and how do we fix them? That's kind of what my primary focus was. That's what my understanding of what I was hired to do. Stuff like the tooth bucket thing, I, I, I don't know any of that stuff. The rip rap thing, there was a couple spots where, yeah, you could say that the rock was too small and then it slipped down the bank. Um, but as far as me going out there and looking and seeing after the damages occurred and you know, multiple years after that project was done, it's hard for me to say with much certainty on site specifics as far as.
I just want to make sure somebody, whatever they do, or if they're going to do something bad, we don't think this is a thing.
Well, yeah. So was that an engineer's deal or, you know, or contractors deal on? Was on the rock size or whatever, maybe not placement right or something, is that?
Oh.
Contractors deal or?
Probably theoretically, there would be a share, a shared.
They just didn't know.
Well, most people are not exactly knowing what should have been done, making the decision, I guess. You know, saying that I'll just be the rocks keepers were more readily available, which he says the right stuff or not knowing, should we use a tooth bucket? Shouldn't be none. I mean, I don't know. I'd have to ask the question, but you know, who's making those decisions on? It's originally the contractor that's plugging, you know, you know, I don't.
Uh, I'm not familiar enough with what the plans and specs were for that project if they specifically called though. I didn't mind calling for a tooth bucket. Um, but and not to get too far off topic, but me personally, if you're talking about trying to seed it, using a tooth bucket is actually okay. Cause you want it. It looks nice if you use a smooth one, but it just, especially if you got clay or it just leaves a smear and it's harder to get good soil to seed contact, but I won't go too far in. Um, okay, real quick. So we talked about different options, you know, losing land, some lands in the channel, especially that option three, if you flatten the banks out. Uh, for the lower twenty miles, uh, the, the open ditch currently has there's right of way along that ditch. So it varies between a hundred and fifteen and a hundred and forty-eight and a half feet. That's the total width. So it's from center line out is half of, half of those numbers. Uh, so damages, this is just kind of how right of way stuff works. Damages, if you do construction or maintenance activities that if there's damages outside that right of way, then those are eligible for reimbursement. Damages inside the right of way or not. Uh, and then also lands in the right of way that are outside the channel. So basically from the top of the bank out, even though there might be strips still in the right of way, that could be used for beneficial use. But it cannot interfere with the easement or rights of the district. So what does that mean? Well, kind of what I'm getting to here is that all these repair options, even just the rip rap, there's some places at the top, we'll have to slope it back and a little bit of land will be lost. Uh, but generally, all that is within the existing right of way. Um, so we talk about, do we need to acquire additional right of way or not? Um, there's, there's several things that kind of go into that because one, right away, you don't get, there's no property taxes paid on that and there's no drainage district assessments paid on that. Uh, right away area. Uh, and I guess depending on what option we're looking at, I guess this is a discussion that we have to have as far as right of way. The biggest one obviously is, is option three, because that would be up to maybe thirty acres of land that could be lost to the channel. Uh, in our analysis, it looks like all of that would be within the existing right of way. Uh, and kind of how I'm looking at it is if we dig out material, some of that material is going to be poor. We're putting it up on the bank. Uh, if we end up going outside the existing right of way, again, that would be eligible for damage reimbursement. But that's going to vary kind of along the ditch depending on what kind of material you're pulling, you're pulling out. So kind of my recommendation is that we handle that not by purchasing additional right of way, but basically doing damage reimbursements kind of on a, on a case by case basis for landowner by landowner basis. Okay. Uh, I just wanted real quickly touch on permitting. Cause I know there's, there's damages to the ditch and we want to get stuff fixed. Um, if we did the flattening the banks back, we would need a floodplain permit from the Iowa D N R. I've applied for that and asked for uh, expedited review process. And I mean, from everything I'm hearing, shouldn't be a problem to get that permit. Uh, the Army Corps permit would be required for the rip rap. So you, if you're adding any sort of fill material, which rip rap would be considered adding something in to a water in the United States, they they have to ask them basically. And that wouldn't be a big deal normally if you're doing just a little bit, doing less than two thousand feet. It falls under this regional permit that's fairly straightforward. If you do over two thousand feet, then you need an individual permit, which is a minimum of a six month process. So that's a, a little bit of a twist on. A single project.
It'll give you a state over possible projects, you'd have two thousand, two thousand.
You if you could theoretically do that, the regional permit does have a thing in there that says you, you're not supposed to break it up to try to avoid that sort of a thing, but yeah. Uh, so anyways, that's, that's a possible twist on this. And then I do just want to mention again, real quick, buffer strips. So I'm guessing there's a lot of C R P contracts, buffer strip up along this ditch. Uh, we talked about lands potentially being lost to the channel. I talked to uh, Brian with the N R C S. He said that, you know, as far as getting landowners in trouble about that, that's not an issue. But if there's land lost to the channel, that would be removed from the C R P contract. Uh, and then the other thing is the nesting season. So in the past, when we did open ditch work, um, C R P contracts, there's typically no disturbance allowed during the nesting season, but you could get a waiver from the county committee. Um, that has somewhat recently changed. And now you have to get approval from the state technical committee. And they only meet once about every three months. And also that includes potentially an environmental review. And maybe fishing wildlife, looking at it. So it just as before, the landowners, I mean, we don't know who's got C R P or not. We can't request this stuff on behalf of the landowners. We can help, help you. Uh, but we ask that that be done as soon as possible, I guess, if there's going to be any work that we're, we're doing here. And I am trying to communicate with, with the state people for the N R C S and just letting them know, hey, we got to be able to do ditch maintenance and this is a prime time of the year to be able to do some of this work. Uh, and it's not the drainage district C R P contracts, it's the landowners. So yes, the district does not want to get landowners in trouble. Uh, with the N R C S, the USDA. Uh, but at the same time, if it, I mean, this came up probably fifteen years ago and there was threats from counties to just say, well, we're not going to allow C R P along ditches because we can't get in there and do ditch maintenance. So we'll see where that goes, but I'm I'm communicating with the state on that. Uh, I will just, I've kind of touched on all that stuff. Um, I guess you want me to read objections at this point or should we?
You, you just have.
You can read the objections quick and then we can have discussion. All right. Okay.
Otherwise, they probably won't get them.
Yeah, I'm going to sit down. It's, okay. On Sandra K Schultz Revocable Trust. I object to the plan as proposed in lots creep twenty-one and twenty-seven where the ditch borders fortieth avenue from approximately station ten forty-two to ten seventy-four. In twenty twenty-one, the ditch was cleaned and widened entirely just to my farm land side, leaving me with all spoils. Moving the creek bed further to one side caused severe erosion on the outer, on the over excavated side. Contractor never followed any slope formula and left the excavated side vertical along this whole area. I have already leveled double the cleanout on my side and need the county to share in this project, project on their side. And then I've got a omitted or misplaced pipes. There's a list here. Uh, around site four oh eight, replacement surface pipe too high for tile that should have been hooked into it. Approximately site four ten tile covered up with no grain pipe connected. Round station ten thirty-two tile broken and covered up, no grain pipe, water cutting hole and creek bank. Uh, between ten thirty-four and ten forty, two destroyed tile and no drainage pipes in ditch. With a more section five, site three sixty-nine dash one tile wash out back into field. Okay. Landowners Walter Bradley and Adele Carlin. Petition for drainage repair and repair solutions for hearing on joint drainage district number one. Main open ditch, Cassuth County at eighty acre plot northeast of P twenty and B sixty-three intersection. A second request for damages done by this project. First request was April nineteenth, twenty twenty. There is a major flaw in building the ditch height located approximately two hundred feet east of the bridge on P twenty. There's photo with this, the ditch height is too low. When the ditch fills to capacity, it overflows onto my field, bringing the re such as tree limbs piled on top and garbage for miles to the north. The ditch height needs to be brought up to the height of surrounding fields. Result of poor workmanship contractor of this project. Number three, four thirty inch steel culvers need to be removed. They bring ditch water onto my field every year when ditch is even half full. Once the bottom of the field with ditch water, they were meant to take water out of the field, but they do just the opposite. This field never flooded before this project. Four thirty inch culvers for an eighty acre field is excessive. They cannot be seen and are dangerous and they don't work. Steve photos. I've already paid for this project. I have posed twice now. The last assessment in twenty twenty-two, I paid two hundred and seventy dollars extra on my taxes for this project and do not intend to pay now to repair the poor workmanship or design of this project. This project has never benefited me and has only caused me damage and additional expense. I am not the only landowner along this ditch that was opposed to this project. And I am not the only one who is unhappy with the results of this extra expense needed to fix it. The cost to make this right should be spared by those responsible. The cost to make this right should be spared by those responsible for the work. The contractors and those responsible for its inception. Kasuth and Palo Alto County and the people that brought it about. Signed Walter, uh, seven, Bradley and Miguel. Uh, here's a letter from Richie Tilges. Uh, main open dish repairs. If or when damage is corrected, please consider flapping the slope blank banks so they are not so steep. And angling the tile outlets down and with the flow of water. Banks that are too steep fall down and slough into the dredge when. Wet and with heavy snow and heavy with snow. Tile outlets that are very long and hang straight out over the dredge are broken by water flow and heavy snow. A request for repairs form has been filed. Filled out in Kasuth County for damage on, on my property. Our property enclosed our photos of a sinkhole washout that was taken and a large, large chunk. Of C R P ground next to the dredge sloughing of the dredge bank. And a destroyed outlet tile right by the bridge, my county road E nineteen. I slash we paid a large amount of money just a couple of years ago to maintain the stretch. And I'm not happy to pay it again so soon. Please be conservative with tax money and if repairs are made, make sure they are done correctly. This one's from Gary Tilges, I think. My name is Gary Tilges. I'm from Fenton, Iowa. A landowner in district one in Kasuth and Palo Alto counties. I'm writing to object to this drainage ditch repair. We just paid to have the ditch cleaned out two years ago. I understand the repairs need to be done, but the engineer and contractor that did the work the first time should be held accountable. The supervisors need to be held accountable also. Tax and spend is all they do. These engineers come up with these high repair amounts. So they make more. Supervisors need to think about the taxpayers. Harry Meyer. I am requesting that my opposition statement below be read at your next meeting. Where the main ditch repairs related to drains district one will be discussed in a term. I am in strong. I think he meant opposition. Strong position. I'm going to say strong opposition to the proposed open ditch repairs in Kasuth County District number one. Repairs in Kasuth and Palo Alto counties. My question is the ditch determination due to farming activity. It is my opinion that the landowners farming directly to the bank repairs be held to pay the majority of the open ditch repair cost. In summary, I strongly oppose the proposed bank repairs in drains district one Kasuth and Palo Alto County. Deborah Meyer. I am writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed. For the main open ditch and rains district number one, Susan Palo Alto County. My question is, have you checked into FEMA funds and would this project qualify for funds? It appears this project would qualify for FEMA funds. FEMA funds would significantly reduce the taxpayer cost to fifteen percent of the cost of the open ditch repairs. As a landowner in district number one, an actual cost of all three repair proposals needs to be determined and addressed prior to a determination. Please consider my strong objection to the proposed repairs of the ditch bank. Repairs. If the decision to move forward with the ditch repairs is determined, it would be my suggestion, that suggestion. That the least cost option made repairs is utilized in your decision. And the landowners directly next to the open ditch pay the majority of the cost of repairs. In summary, I strongly oppose the proposed bank repairs in. Brains district number one Kasuth and Palo Alto County. I think that's art and. Over. Well, that's those, that's all. Art mogul. We do, we do not object. What is proposed as we need to keep drainage ditch working. Our concern is the trees are coming back. We were told they would be taken care of. Three years we waited. But nothing has, nothing has been done to stop their growth. Why? We are holding a check that has not been okay to cash. And. They'll just farm land on their end. I'm going to put you the last thing. I, let's see, I object to the joint drainage district one proposed main ditch. Preparers in Kasuth and Palo Alto counties. Major repairs were made in twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, which was a significant expense to landowners. The problems occurring now are, are a result of the engineering mistakes that were made. Examples include. The ditches were dug too deep, causing erosion. The use of small riprap instead of large riprap resulted in collapse. Destruction of vegetation that lined the drainage ditch caused natural erosion. Broken pipes because of the poor quality and placement and ineffective structure of rock shoots. To me, landowners should not have to pay for these engineering mistakes made by Corey Jurgens Construction LLC. We have grown images of the work that was completed and approved in April of twenty twenty two. Who approved this work as a third party engineering firm reviewed the situation. I appreciate that you have reached out at agencies to help aid this project. How likely is this to happen? Or you use disaster relief funds to help? I think it is completely unreasonable to expect landowners to pay this amount every other year. I own a small share of my family farm and this takes almost half the profit. Also pay taxes on the land in both counties. A portion of our tax money should be set aside for these types of projects. My family members and I have observed this drainage system for over fifty years and the best solution is to let it be in its natural state. My other suggestion is to fix the five problems slash complaints that were in the report. As a board of supervisors, you need to act and provide a reasonable state of repair and keep your landowners' best interests combined. Uh, Michael Tilges. I'm, I am, I am objecting in writing regarding the recent notice of public hearing document titled Joint Drains District One. Main open ditch repairs Kasuth and Palo Alto County. Please file my objection with the Kasuth and Palo Alto County auditors. I am concerned that the damages to the main drainage ditch number one may be due to more than just natural causes. The previous company in completing the drainage repairs worked in twenty twenty or twenty twenty one. Took no action to mitigate leaving the banks of the ditch bare of vegetation. Installed surface pipes and tile that malfunctioned under predictable weather conditions. Like in a parentheses, the set of weather conditions that occurred in the past in Iowa. And put in place riprap that did not perform as intended. That company, in my opinion, has responsive, is responsible for a portion of the new repairs. Additionally, I am, I am objecting to this work until efforts to secure other funding sources are determined and prepared. And. Okay, two more. Rosemary Lates. We are. When is enough enough? We firmly and absolutely object to any and all proposed repairs, our main contentions. Number one, the exorbitant amount of money that we had to pay for the previous failed repairs to the same area. We believe the previous engineering firm and previous repair companies. And those involved should be held accountable slash liable for. Number two, we were made aware that the person. Persons farming, profiting from the land in the, in question does not pay taxes on that land. It looks from the photos, number three, it looks from the photos that the land beside the bank has been left idle for quite some time. But the tall brush slash weeds, et cetera, that have grown in, so why the need for any repairs at all to that area? Or if the objections you have been getting and will receive are not heard and you proceed. We as the taxpayers demand that the money that we have paid on this prior failed repair project be considered already as payment. And Jolene Burtland. Uh, I object to further repairs to the main open ditch currently being discussed. I recently paid eight thousand dollars in additional tax assessments. On the sixty acres I own in Fairfield Township Palo Alto County. I object to paying any more additional monies to this project.
How many required repair requests have been?
Well, I don't know the exact number off the top of my head, but I mean, that the one objection said five. I know we've got, the engineering report has copies of those.
There's one more and five.
Well, yeah, and that's one thing, I think. My guess would be is that once people knew that. It was all being looked at, that there was less of a need to file specific requests.
And what we did tell people that.
Okay, okay. Rather than getting a whole bunch of.
When these projects are undertaken and done, have they inspected? Yes, sounds like a lot of people I know in our neighborhood thought the banks very steep. Wondered if they got seeded. I don't know how you seed a bank, it's almost worth, why never soil any seed?
If we paid for seeding, that was, we got ripped off big time.
I'm just asking the question, is there any accountability and anyone that follows up on that before payment?
Yeah, there, I mean, there should be, that's how, how this works is that. Like we're, so we're the engineer, let's just. If we do a project, um, basically we would put, we'd plans and specifications together, put it out for bid. Uh, typically the lowest bidder gets it, not always.
Is that part of the problem, the lowest bidder, they set up to do this big project? That's where I think it was, with the last contractor.
Yeah, and they weren't doing what they're doing.
Yeah, they had never done one, didn't. The board proved, uh, the pipe, the increase in the pipe, the cost of the pipe that they didn't figure in there. When they bid the project, they didn't secure their pipe for the project and then the. Of course, everything was inflated big time. Well, we got to go ahead from the board paid for ten thousand dollars increase in the pipe costs.
And I, I can't speak to much of what happened on that project, of course, but. I can just tell you generally how it's supposed to work, so. We as the engineer would be overseeing the work and if you do pay. Pay estimates and pay claims, there's inspections and things that basically it has to be approved. Uh, by the contractor, the engineer, and then the board before they get paid. Um, and so what they're supposed to be doing is. Doing what those plans and specifications call for, and it's kind of. I mean, there is, there's supposed to be an inspection element where you're checking whether that, that is done or not before they get paid.
So do we need that old engineer and the old contractors at these meetings and questioning their work?
Problem is, problem is the board already approved that. And it's, it's behind us, behind the board at that point, right?
Do you ever get references?
Records of, oh, references. So I can, again, I can't speak to that last project, but I can just tell you from myself. I don't necessarily, if we open bids and we have this, there's different bid numbers. It's not, it doesn't just automatically go to the, to the lowest bidder. Um, and especially if it's somebody that I don't have experience with, I don't, I'm not familiar with them. Um, I would ask for references, I would ask for. What their workforce is, what their equipment, what equipment they have. Because you, you want to make sure that they are capable and reputable enough to do the project.
They might find a whole brand new bank account because they got the job, but they didn't have the equipment to do the job.
You're talking about the prior contractor?
No, the one you're, if you're going out to hire one, you go look at the work they've done so you know what you're, you can, you can expect.
Not typically. Not typically.
That's something I think my, you guys might want to think about. I'm, as far as I'm go, if somebody's going to do something for me, I want to see what they've done. I don't know, I'm not paying anybody to do something that's not good.
Right, and.
I mean, when you get, when you hire people, you get your references and you go check them out.
Yeah, and I, I do want to clarify on that. It's not that we don't look at projects. When you say look at projects, I have not physically gone out. And, and looked at, oh, they did this project, I want to go look and see how they did. But in pictures and getting as part of the references and asking what other projects they've done. And I don't just ask them for references, I ask for similar projects that they've done and then I contact the people who. That they were dealing with for that project, whether they provided them as a reference or not, and ask them how they thought they did. Though that's, that's kind of part of the process of recommending for award of the contract. It's not.
So far, I've been on, been in on three of those projects and every one of them is screwed up and the man can't really do it. So something is not being done that needs to be done. I mean. I would like to see one project where they come in and it's done and looks beautiful and it works the way it's supposed to. Just one. Please don't send me the bill. It, it's frustrating, I realize that. I could, I could say if you hire people nowadays.
While you guys were talking, I looked at our repair request for this calendar year and last calendar year. I'm, I have a little bit of a source rope, please bear with me, this is, or you can if you want.
What's the number?
There's. On the open ditch in twenty twenty three, there was seven repair requests. One of those was for the drone flight for, um, reviewing. Um, but then there's other specific sections for the other ones. In twenty twenty four, we have had seven as seven requests, but two of them were on tile systems. So five were on the open ditch this calendar year. Um, and I, I can't speak to every single detail of concern for seeding and all that, but I do know. Prior to our districts changing, the portion north of eighteen was in my district. And there were times I was out there, I, I looked for seed, there was seed out there. Uh, they, they were seeding, uh, I know the engineers are responsible for over, for reviewing that. We did heavily discuss that in the boardroom at the completion of that project that a lot of that seed did not establish due to the weather conditions. There was talk of coming back in and having, uh. More seed flown on by airplane and I don't believe that ever happened. Um, and primarily most of that was south of eighteen that needed attention, which is more of the damaged areas right now. Um, I was, I was not handling that. But in comparison, this project happened a little bit earlier than another one that's close to. Where I live and everything. Uh, we did, and that was in the disaster, presidential disaster declaration of twenty nineteen. Oh drainage district four, it was the same engineering company, so people that are concerned about that. This was the same engineering company, um. We did have heavy rains up there this spring as well as a little bit last year. But those went to two to one side slopes and from everything I've seen yet this year, it held up very well. So just some food for thought, that's some of the things I've discussed with Colin when he was at our meeting before. Um but I I've personally seen the difference in these two projects. And I think the two to one side slopes paid dividends up north. I I think it's it's better in a lot of ways.
And you.
Why wasn't that done the first time?
So the the last project that was done, I think that was started before I was, the. Process was started before I was on the board, but the intent of it was to repair back to original conditions. That was touched on a little bit in the conversation.
Repair, get your words right.
No, it it's it's repair, repair instead of improvement, those are the two classifications in the code, it's repair and improvement. And it was, it was a repair project, so maintenance, repair, same thing. Um, it was not an improvement project, it was not designed to be an improvement project. So they were limited in that regard with the slopes, um. There's a lot of aspects that go into that. And and to Steve, your comment for, I don't think this is funny, I I feel bad for every single one of you that. Are sitting in this room that just paid a substantial bill and are looking at the condition of it right now. Um, I I. I do not envy your position, I I don't envy sitting here right now either, but. At the same token, the. The code of Iowa requires we engage an engineer over a certain dollar limit. In the last couple of years, the state legislature has loosened up those dollar limits. Um, higher than they previously were, but we still are required to hold a public hearing for anything over fifty thousand. I don't remember the competitive bid threshold for this year, probably a hundred and eighty.
Eighty-seven.
Okay, so our our threshold for things we do through the board is tied with the competitive bid threshold with the DOT. And Colin thinks that's a hundred and ninety-seven, so. A bu- a large part of the reason we started this process is because we knew. The combination of all these repairs was going to exceed that threshold, which is our legal obligation. As trustees to engage an engineer at that point in time. I ideally, I would agree with the comments of let's set a maintenance budget for the next how many years and do something moving forward. But I don't know if that would comply with the law. Um, we could do a one-time project and it could, you guys as landowners could sign up for waivers. And it could be spread out over a period of time that way, but I don't know that we can just say we're gonna spend. A hundred and fifty thousand a year for the next ten years and and do something. Uh, I I, I think we'd have to get a legal opinion on that, I don't know if any other. Board members have any thoughts that way, but I don't. I would, I would need to do some checks before I would agree to doing that, just for the legal aspect of it. Uh, but. I totally understand the the thought process and the concerns farmers, just general common sense that that makes sense. Um. But there there is significant spots, and that's where picking and choosing and and doing all that is. Outside the scope of what boards typically handle, especially on large projects like this, so. I just wanted to try and, and actually another thing I think is valuable to point out to you guys here. I mentioned it with Colin the last time he was in our boardroom, but. The other project on drain four that I talked about, the open ditch excavation was significantly cheaper. In in the bid and the project that we actually did than what Colin put in his estimate. So if option three was pursued. I would anticipate we would get bids lower than his estimate, obviously. That has to go through the process of being publicly bid, it's all dependent on how aggressive contractors are. That's out of our control, but the last project that we had in this county that was a similar size. Go with better prices than that.
It's a number of it uh done on. On the the repairs, I guess, but if anybody put together a number on. The. Seven by one and five by others, any, has there been a number put together?
So though I think most, if not all, those were forwarded on to Colin, but it wasn't. His report does not outline just those specific sites because. I I mean, I touched on it before, there were other people that came in with concerns and stuff, and we said. We said this process was already in the works, so there's other repair requests that people. Could have potentially filled out that were not filled out. And that's why we did a blanket overview of the ditch with a drone flight to identify all those areas at once.
Duplicated.
Um. I don't believe so, there is, there are one or two smaller spots we fixed, isolated with.
We have fixed two spots that are isolated that are not in this report. Um.
But those would be relative.
And and one, one request was fixed by a landowner prior to. Us doing anything.
We haven't asked if there's any more, people like to sign up.
Well, that Colin did ask if there was any further damages previously, yeah, he did.
Objections, he didn't ask if there's any more objections.
Any further.
From people sitting in the audience.
Well, I I think that we got two problems. One of them is that the original project has some flaws that haven't been addressed. And the second problem is the damages that are caused. That that they have to repair right now. I think the the they have to go back to the original project, and there's some things that are right about that. My my property is all crap from everybody north of me. I got trees and limbs and and cornstalks that haven't been, and and that field for ten weeks. It's three foot deep, and that's flawed in the project, you know, there's a low spot, and you can see it. You know, it doesn't take a genius to, you know, figure out that, you know, that all the crap that's been coming down. And that those have to be addressed, and then you also, then you have to have the damages that are created. But some of the original things on this project were, you know, ill-designed. For bad workmanship. So you, you know, you really have to go back and correct the original problems, you know, and then start fixing the damages. I think the first thing they should address is the original problems, the original flaws.
I think. Uh and and yours spot in particular, I do have that in in here as. Adding a, adding some fill material there to fill in that low spot, just on that, on that part of it. Uh but I think it, it, I mean, there have been different discussions and in the objections talk about, you know, tiles that. Were cut off and weren't hooked into the ditch and stuff like that, that might be remnants issues from. From the prior project, and I guess. I I I get what you're saying about differentiating damages from twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, there's additional ones. And then some of those issues, and I guess I'd look for direction from the board on how they would want. Me to view that as far as including that in this project or. Handling on a case by case basis.
Are there any spots along the dredge that the mains are being adversely affected where? It's backing up and causing the main not to flow like it should.
I don't know that I can say that, I I don't know that I can answer that with certainty, when when we were driving along the ditch, I wasn't necessarily.
You, I'm sure. You, it'd be a complaint, we haven't heard any complaints about. You know, the ditch is not working like it should, backing up, causing my main not to flow, you know, that's, that gets everybody's attention. But, you know, as far as landowners, you you want your mains working, and it sounds like it's. You know, that's, that's not an issue to pay.
Yeah, and actually, that's, that's probably a good point, I mean, when there's questions about. The benefit of the last project, that that was the purpose of the last project, to restore the water flow capacity. And. The fact that we're not getting numerous complaints about mains not working shows that 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 did its job. Um but I think most of the complaints that I'm aware of are all structure of the bank related. Um, and.
Are we to see that every time we get one of these kind of.
See, and and that's, and that's a fair question, and that's, that's the point I tried to make a little bit earlier with. Reshaping the banks, um. The other project that we did where we brought it to a two to one side slope, um. We tried to do hydro seeding, the hydro seeding didn't even take off that great, we came back and. Put seed on with an airplane, tried to pick the best time where there's a little bit of rain coming, not a lot, I mean. The stars kind of lined up a little bit on that, and I. I was hands-on with that, so I can speak to it very clearly, but that project with. Sloping the banks back. I think is more more valuable on the long-term side of things because it. It gives better structure to the bank so that when these rain events happen. They don't cause damage in the future, and I think that's probably the last thing all of us wanna do is. Do something today that we have to repeat in two more years or five more years. I don't wanna spend good money and blow it out the window, so if if we are spending money, I think it's important. To spend it in the form where it's gonna be the most useful, and me. Sloping the banks back is that option, option three hypothetically, uh we did have a question.
Well, back to the point we were just, it's incredible how fast the water gets down that creek right now. My uncle lives on a hundred and twenty, about as far south as that. And I'll say twelve hours, but it's probably more like eight hours, that creek went from practically normal to bank full. So if the water moves through. Through that creek real well.
And and the more private tiling people do, the more there's ability for water to get into the ditch, I mean, it. We're dealing with a whole different environment in the ditch now than than they would have when it was dug out originally. But I think that's also important to keep in mind, the. The facility kind of needs to match the environment, what we're dealing with, we're dealing with. Heavier rain events that come harder and faster, and I mean, it's. It's just the nature of the cards we have to play with right now.
You also.
You have something else.
You know, I'm just gonna reiterate, this isn't going away, I I seriously think we can sit back here in three years from now and say that's seven inch rain. I really do think there needs to be some type of a long-term. Kind of a financially acceptable amount that, and and it needs to be. Kind of policed and looked at, somebody, I mean, I really do think there needs to be more of a long-term approach. Cut a lot, it's a big creek, it's a big drainage area, it's thirty miles long. I I think that's something you guys should really. Consider or think about, I don't know how you set it up.
Yeah, I think the hope would be that some, we would, we do a project like this, that. We're trying to set it up, set it better in the future, but at the same time, there's still gonna, I mean. You asked about if I thought that there would be problems in the future or whatever, but. Let's just say that that last project wasn't done and we had that flood, I think there would have been damages, would have been near as bad and all. But the fact is, there's still sand and gravel veins along there, and it's, it's got a history of of some problems. And so to your point, I think if you can, if you can keep on top of some of those issues. I agree with you, I mean, we we don't have to do a big project like this, and the goal is to not have to keep doing big projects like this before. If we can get it to a level. You know, get it in a good condition, and then moving forward, it's more of a. A maintenance, you know, maintenance kind of on an as-needed basis on a site by site basis where a request is made. And the board can line up a contractor to make, make us all fix as need, basically. Try to keep ahead.
Colin, have have you been any place? In any other county that people have. Spent so much money every year to fix, you know, a hundred thousand or whatever, have you been there? Now, he asked, we need a legal opinion, and that's probably true, but have you been already exposed to that in some other county?
No, I haven't. I'm I'm not aware of counties that do that, and.
So another thing I got, I have you been around enough FEMA projects because. Uh if you fix a one-to-one like you're talking about. Because that's what it was before, if they had talked to some FEMA people, I think that they would say exactly what he's saying, one to two. Some of them in that sandy area, one to three, or they're not gonna come in and pay.
Right.
Next year or the year after, when you have a five hundred-year flood, unless you meet some of those standards. That they have, one-to-one isn't gonna, isn't gonna work. And how, the other question, I got like a half a dozen questions for you, but what if we leave this for? I mean, if you went, if any of these guys went and bought a car. And in two years, twenty-one, twenty-three, the motor fell out of it, transmission went out of it, and there's nobody responsible. They say, oh, no, that's your, you bought that car. You know, there's people, we you read one, she's got sixty acres and she paid eight thousand dollars. Just for that project, so you don't wanna put another eight thousand dollars into a car that's lost the motor and the transmission found it. Can we leave that five more years? Still, we're gonna improve it and see how much it's gonna heal itself? You talked about that, I'm just wondering, I mean, I feel sorry for these guys out here. I mean, if you gotta put yourself in their position, if it was me, I'd be livid if I put that much money in there. I'm too tight with my money.
Yeah, I think on that. In driving along the entirety of this thirty-mile ditch, there's, there's enough that is so bad. That I don't think you can leave it for five years and and expect that it would fix itself or be okay. Uh so I think at a minimum, those, the worst of the worst spots, something needs to get done soon. The sooner the better, um. If there was, if there was a consideration, okay, let's handle the worst of the worst. And the moderate stuff, we wanna risk it and and see. That's something that could be considered, but what I would say, cause there's a chance that some more stuff than I thought could. Heal itself to a reasonable state, um but we'd have to watch it because it could get way worse, some of those spots. So you'd have to be watching it all the time to to see if it's, is it healing or is it getting worse, because. And that costs money to to be looking at.
And those, those people individually, go ahead, those individual people are gonna be upset with the two.
If you, if you, have you assessed the twenty-four damage yet?
No.
Well, I mean, you need to assess the twenty-four damage because that's what's gonna be available for FEMA. And that's, I mean, that's gonna cost these people less money than what you're talking about the twenty-three, I mean, you're gonna have to figure out that before you really can move forward.
Get it filed soon.
Yeah, that. Yeah, that was, that was one of the things, that's why I was kind of asking what. Have you seen for additional twenty-twenty-four damages because? We can go out there and and look for additional, it's gonna take time. We probably want to do a drone, a drone flight. And basically, part of this meeting today was figuring out, is there enough damage to justify? That additional time and expense of looking into the twenty-twenty-four damages. And so I was, I was trying to gain.
And and that actually, it it ties in with your question of future FEMA eligibility. If if we have. Documented situations where it's not in a good state of repair. And something happens again. It's not eligible. And if. If we, if we go towards a two-to-one side slope or something like that. That is considered a mitigation effort. Uh, which they heavily encourage because they don't want to pay for the same thing over and over, which. Landowners don't want to pay that either, as you're all vocalizing, rightfully so. Uh, and that's where the intention of. Doing a project that has long-term effects. Is is more cost-effective in my opinion.
One thing on the twenty-twenty-four damages, if we were gonna do this, we were gonna flatten the banks back, that option three. Um, something that I don't know that may be worth looking into more is, okay. Let's say we've got. We know there's probably some twenty-twenty-four damages that. Should be FEMA eligible. Well, the flattening the slopes back would be addressing those as well, and it would be considered a mitigation. But I don't know how much. Money we could secure for the overall project if if we went that route from FEMA. If they would just try to figure out, you know. What portion of that was twenty-twenty-four damages and that's all they've helped pay for or. If they look at it from a larger scale perspective, I don't know that, we'd have to investigate that.
Should, shouldn't you? You're gonna have to differentiate between the two. I mean, you're gonna have to prove that. But the only way you're gonna know what's, is is to inspect it now. That that's really the next.
If you fly up quick, you can get over it pretty quick.
Shouldn't you know some of that before you decide what you're gonna do?
And and that's, and that's part of our conversation here today. It's not that we have to take action. No, that's, that's one part. That's one part of our conversation. It's where we don't have to proceed with doing a certain option today. That's one part of our conversation. Of what we could move forward. So I I agree, that is probably the best course of action, and yes, we do need. Documentation to differentiate between the two years. That's critical for FEMA. But it is, it is one part of our conversation today. As trustees and also with you guys as landowners.
So my point, my question is, where the banks are really bad, where you looked at some of them, should we do something with them before we wait? Are they gonna get worse?
I mean, it depends on. Depends on the weather and it's hard to predict. What's coming down the line of that, we'll find out, but. Yeah, that's, that's one of those things where. Kind of keep. We looked at it and then all this flooding happened and how we gotta, we look at it again and how much time does it take before we. And at some point, do you say, well, we gotta do something about these worst of the worst?
We, at some point, we gotta acknowledge those repair requests.
And either do something or decide to do a project. So I'm hearing today that people don't want to do a big project, so do we go back and do the repair requests?
Maybe when you, what you really need to do is go out and look for those twenty-four things that have happened. And while you're looking at that twenty-four thing, look at the real major thing that need to be done immediately. And then come back and then, hell, get a bit on those. Those major, those ones that we done immediately. But look at the twenty-four and you, and while you're doing that, then you can get it all lined up at the same time. And then meet back.
Along, I I, that's a fair. That's a fair way of looking at it, and I think along those lines too. We can be looking at, we have pictures and everything of the damaged sites that we looked at last fall. And we can, have both gotten worse, and if they have not. That's pretty, I mean, we we've had a lot of rain and a lot of high-water events this spring. If they have not gotten any worse. But maybe they won't, and maybe. Time frame on the FEMA.
But we, we just, we just got the presidential disaster declaration, and some of that is just getting started. So I mean, we haven't even had field inspections or anything like that. We are at the very beginning of the timeline. Uh, and there is. There is ways to get things included that were documented and. Shown. Even before some of that, like if the work is done before they actually get here. There are ways to go back and still get that incorporated. It's a little more difficult, but. Um, there were a couple sites on that other ditch that we repaired. Right away before the big project kicked off, and we did get those incorporated later, so. It, there is, there is some wiggle room. We have a consultant that helped work through all that in twenty nineteen. Actually, he called me while we were in our board meeting this morning, so I need to return that call. When we're done here, but I mean, there are. There are technical aspects to work through here. The biggest thing was FEMA is documenting. Uh, so I I would agree that getting, getting engineered documentation is critical.
I'd make a motion that we continue this hearing. After we get the. Results from the two thousand twenty-four inspection.
Do we, do we need to have a specific date for that, though?
You guys decide that. Does that sound all right?
But don't we have to do that at the hearing to continue it?
We leave it open. The engineer gets back to us and then we set it.
Send notice again then?
If you, if you just, if you continue it to a specific date and time and place, then you don't have to send a notice again. But if you leave it open-ended and then. Then you have to send notice again.
Are you people satisfied with that?
Yes, very much. You have, do you have a timeframe, Colin?
Send a date today, but I.
One of the farmers has written in that he wanted to do it himself, now how many hoops is he gonna have to jump through to do that?
Typically, I mean, from, from my perspective, I, I don't recommend. Having people just go and doing stuff, so. If if somebody just wants to do something, I don't.
We, yeah, we have a motion on the floor, something like that. Either way, I don't.
Roger.
Colin, you think you have a date?
You have a date, Colin?
You have an idea of the time?
Maybe. I boy, I think it's take a heart. Thirty-month last time, about to get through. By the time we. I guess my concern is by the time we get the information, is bring it back into the office and. Get through it and have something ready to come to, it might be more than that. That might be a little. August tenth? We have a special. Following week, the seventeenth.
September seventeen. But but the FEMA thing needs to be filed right away. Be coming through here. You got seventeen, Carmen? Write it down.
Put it in a motion, guys.
Okay, well, why don't we just have them send another letter out when we get it all done?
Okay, so let's just leave it open and send notice again. Okay, guys, we have. Is everyone clear on the motion? We have to continue the public hearing. You do have a second on it. We will not set a date today. We will send notice again. Everyone good with that?
Kyle, just for clarification, so in this process, it's Colin, you're documenting the the twenty-four. You're also gonna look at the worst of the worst. As you're already out there and then. Come back, when you do come back, you can maybe have an estimate. Don't want to jump in on a two, three million dollar project, right? But to fix the worst of the worst, what that.
Not only costs more than what it originally cost.
Please hold your comments. We need to.
So that, that was, I mean, we're, we're gonna get that done. I just want to be sure everybody, you know.
We have a vote on the floor here, hang on. Does everyone understand the motion? Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed, say nay. Motion carries unanimous. We will continue the public hearing. Yep, we will send notice when that is scheduled, so you all will get notice again. I'm Kyle Sacker, Sioux County. Board Supervisor's Chair, I'm in the north end of the county. They asked for introduction, so we'll just go down the line.
Carter Naft, District One. Josh Wacter, uh, District Three, so most of the. Cassoot County.
Well, yes, they don't know that.
Cassoot County, District Five.
Your name?
Roger Jards, sorry.
Jack Plath, Cassoot County, District Two.
Ron Grattan, County Supervisor.
Keith Works, Palo Alto, District One.
Frank Merrill, Palo Alto County Supervisor.
Finis Silver, uh, Palo Alto County Supervisor.
All right, thank you guys for your participation here. If you have any other questions or whatever.